The meeting. So can everyone just make sure, me too, that your devices are turned to silent? And make sure if we do happen to adjourn or have to leave for any period of time, that you also make sure that they're also turned off. We're going, okay. Good evening councillors, officers and community members who might be watching this online. My name's councillor Christine O'Laurs. I'm the Darabben Mayor and the Chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you all here tonight. Well, this afternoon in fact. This meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as possible. This meeting's been scheduled as a special council meeting pursuant to Rule 1.1.2 of the Governance Rules, with notice of the meeting published on the council's website on Wednesday 30th of April. And I do declare the meeting open at 3.39pm. Pursuant to Section 1.1.36 of the Governance Rules, unless all councillors are present and unanimously agree to deal with another matter, only the business specified in the notice calling the meeting is to be transacted. Any discussions relating to confidential information under Section 3.1 of the Local Government Act will require council to move into camera pursuant to Section 66.2. So now that we've got that done, I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting tonight, today, on the lands of the Rarangriwarang people, the traditional owners of this land. I would like to recognise their ongoing, continue... Sorry, I would like to recognise their continuing connection to land, waters and culture and pay my respect to elders past and present. Okay, so I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Councillors, executive leadership team. We've got some staff, municipal monitors. And I think that's all. So welcome. We do have one apology. Councillor Bogliss is unable to attend this evening. Disclosures of conflict of interest. So at this point, I just need to ask if anyone has, any councillor or relevant staff member has conflict of interest in relation to anything that's on tonight's agenda? Also noting that you need to let us know not just that you have a conflict, but the nature of that conflict. And remind you that any conflicts of interest must also be declared immediately prior to the item being considered. So councillors and officers, does anyone have a conflict of interest that they need to declare at this point? No? Okay. So if during the course of the meeting something comes up that alerts you to a conflict, please just make sure that you raise that at that point in time. So councillors' occupational health and safety responsibilities. So we do, council does have a responsibility to ensure that everyone attending this meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. So thank you all for coming along tonight. And I'm sure I don't need to tell you, but I will, that silence needs to be preserved in the gallery at all times, that council or any other person who addresses the meeting needs to do so in a courteous and respectful manner. So I think that's probably, and that, you know, we won't use any words that are derogatory or objectionable. And of course, as the Chairperson, I can ask people to leave the chamber should that need to happen. But again, I'm not imagining that will happen. So, okay, I think we will start. I believe, yep, councillor Jolly.
Mayor, I'd like to move a procedural motion to change the order of business for today's meeting. Would you like me to state what that would be?
Yes, thank you.
So my proposal is that we deal with the item number one first. So that's the annual outcomes report for leisure contracts. And then we follow, then we deal with the governance report, followed by the declaration of a special charge for the solar saver round 4.2. And then we continue with our process on the draft budget and draft council plan, just for the purpose of clarifying for the community. We deal with the business of the past of the council before we deal with the business of the future.
Do we have a second for that motion? All those in favour? Okay, passed. Thank you. Okay, you've marked up my run sheet now, but anyway, thank you.
Apologies, Mayor.
The first one is the same. So item one, sorry, can you put that? Yep, item one, is the 2023-24 Annual Outcomes Report for the Leisure Contracts. Councillors, have anyone got any questions of, yep, of the officers regarding this? And councillor Jolly?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Just noting that the Clublinks report notes that the participation of women and girls at Northcotten Bandura golf courses sits at around 4%, 6% respectively. Do we have any information about what goal has been set for the participation of women and girls in these, in both of these courses, golf courses?
Through you, Mayor, thank you for the question. I don't have that on hand if we have that advice, but very happy to provide feedback on that out of session. Thank you.
Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up from that question, I also wanted to ask the differences from previously, what the participation in girls was compared to what it is now as well, if possible, if we could get that information, and whether it's actually increased. Thanks.
Thank you for the question and through yourself, Mayor. It has increased and I look forward to giving you the specific data.
Okay. So have we got a mover for this motion? Councillor Jolly? And a second, councillor Arturi? Does the mover wish to speak?
Just very briefly, Mayor. I'll rise just to note that the report indicates there's been an increase in participation of women and girls across the board. And there are some specific statistics around the previous and past participation of women and girls. There has been a good increase. So I am curious to know what the goal is, has been set and how that has been progressing over time. And I'll just leave it there and say I think Clublinks were coming to give a briefing about their progress over the last 12 months, over the period of this report. And I commend the motion to councillors that we note to this report.
Does the seconder wish to speak?
Second the motion and reserve my right to speak.
Are there any other councillors who want to speak to this motion? No? Okay. We will go to the vote then. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. So thank you, that's carried unanimously. We will now move on to 5.4, which is the governance report. You're going to have to bear with me while I find my pages. Okay. So councillors, do we have any questions of officers regarding this item? No? Okay, do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Jolly? Do I have a second for the motion?
Just to clarify, Mayor, I wish to move amended officer's recommendation.
Okay, so you weren't moving the original? You're moving an amended one?
That's correct.
Okay. So then did we have a second for this amended motion? Okay, councillor Sangster. Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to find my amendment. Here we go. So earlier on, as people would have seen if they scroll through, we just identified that there was, councillor Salcos's surname was missing from one of the reports. So just a minor amendment to correct that. But I note with interest, and I read with great interest, that the Victorian Electoral Commission's election report for the Darabben City Council elections last year is contained in the governance report this afternoon. And that report reveals that there has been a lower than average voter turnout in Darabben when compared to other councils, with the exception of Melbourne City Council. Obviously, they count things differently. And concerningly to me, the lowest voter turnout in Darabben was recorded among people aged 25 to 44 and people in my ward, in South Central Ward. So in this motion, I'm calling on you, the Mayor, to write to the Victorian Electoral Commission requesting that the Victorian Electoral Commission engage in consultation with local councils on plans to improve voter turnout in the areas where we experience lower voter turnout, in particular requesting information, not any plans that the VEC has for greater engagement with people aged 25 to 44, with renters and apartment residents and other marginalised groups and those represented in voter turnout figures in the report. And also to call on them to provide any options to increase the time for enrollment prior to an election. This is quite timely, given that we have a by-election coming up in Darabben in a couple of months' time. Sadly, that is because of the loss of our colleague Katano Greco. And I note that there are some great disparities. So it is of great concern to all of us as elected representatives, as kind of the pillars, you know, we are the embodiment of democracy in our country. And yet there is a large group of people who are not fully engaged in that democratic process. And that also means that they're not fully engaged in what it is that council represents for them. But it also means that their voice has not been heard. So Australian Bureau of Statistics data will reveal that approximately 50% of all the high-rise residents in Darabben live in South Central Ward. So this is a very strong indication that the people in these age groups are more likely to be renters, living in apartments. And those people perhaps don't check their mail. There's, we just need more information about why it is that there is low voter turnout in these areas. So I commend the motion to everybody and acknowledge all the work of all the staff who put together the governance report, which is a very detailed report that comes to us on a regular basis. And it's a very important part of the foundation of the transparency that we strive for here at Darabben City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the second wish to speak?
I reserve my right to speak, thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Arturi?
Thank you, Mayor. And it is some very interesting points that councillor Jolly makes. So I think it is some important questions that we can ask of the VEC to inquire as to their work and strategy around voter turnout, in particular as councillor Jolly highlights, with the by-election coming up in the next few months. The other aspect of the governance report I just wanted to highlight briefly was the Community Advisory Committee and the extension of the sunset period for all current committees and reference groups to the end of this calendar year. Obviously, later in this special meeting, we'll be adopting the new council plan. And it's an important task that we have to make sure that those advisory committees and reference groups aligns with the strategic direction of this new council. And I very much look forward to that. But otherwise, I also want to commend officers for their work in this governance report. And I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to pick up on something that councillor Arturi just said, we will be releasing drafts of the council plan and budget later for community consultation. We're not quite at the finish line, though we're very much trying to get there. Just to pick up on councillor Jolly's point about the VEC and the results that's shown, I think the other important thing for us to note in relation to the democracy side of it, I think councillor Jolly's articulated those well. There is a cost of living implication here as well. I don't know how many other people have seen, but there have been lots of discussions online about people now getting fines from the VEC because they weren't aware that those elections were happening. They missed the notifications in the mail. And a number of people going through legal processes to challenge those. So the more that we can do to help less people be in that situation, I think is something very important for us to keep in mind. Thank you.
We might move to the vote, though. All those in favour of this motion? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so on to 5.5, just Declaration of a Special Charge. I'm using the old numbers in case I'm confusing anyone. So have councillors got any questions in relation to this report? Okay, do we have a mover? Thank you councillor O'Brien. Do we have a second? Thank you councillor Arturi. And does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, well, thank you. So yes, pleased to rise in support of the motion. It's pretty complex in its formal detail, but in some ways really beautifully simple in terms of the impact that it delivers for our community. The motion approves the next round of our highly successful solar saver programme, which Darabben households helps them lower their energy bills and cut carbon emissions. It's a programme we can be very proud of, not only for its local success, but for inspiring other councils to follow our lead. There are two streams, bulk buy for those who can pay upfront and the special charge programme, which this item covers, where council covers the upfront costs and households are paid over 10 years to help people access that when they may not be otherwise able to. It's a very practical and fair way for us to support people facing cost of living pressures while advancing sustainability. Over the years, we've expanded and improved the programme, including businesses, renters and in more recent times, ensuring the rebates are reaching things further than renewable technologies and including energy efficiency and electrification measures. We want to make sure that it continues to reach those who need it most as we look ahead of what a version of this programme might look like in the future. Last year, we specifically broadened it to include reverse cycle heating and cooling, hot water heat pumps. And that intent is to help people with recovering costs through their energy bills. So in this round, we're supporting 36 households with over 300,000 in clean energy systems, unlocking 55,000 in government rebates. And this includes $36 installations, five hot water systems, three heating and cooling units. And that's estimated to cost 393 tonnes of emissions or the equivalent of taking 146 cars off the road. So a really great outcome. The reach is strong across the municipality. And in fact, the data that we show in this round gives us 61% are north of Bell Street and a whopping 42% in reservoirs. So that's really great to see. In our briefing about this programme, we learned that it was delivered over nine megawatts of solar and is expected to save local households 33 million over 10 years, money that can go towards schooling, hobbies, supporting local businesses or simply providing a much needed buffer at this time. This is climate action with real economic and social benefits. And we should continue to encourage people to participate all over Darabben in whatever future version of the programme we may have. In closing, I just want to recognise our staff in the team that work on this, that manage the complexity and the compliance requirements behind the scene. And thank you for helping our community take meaningful, practical, practical climate action. Thank you.
Does the second wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, so if there's no further debate, I'll put this item to the vote. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you all. Okay. Right. Okay, so we are now up to the council budget, which was previously item 5.2, which incorporates the four-year financial outlook, the 10-year finance plan, the 10-year asset management plan and the revenue and rating and associated documents, all in draft format at the moment and being endorsed for, to go out to community for your input. So does anyone have any questions in relation to the item? Okay, so the way we're going to, just to be clear, we're doing this one in a particular way. So the way we will deal with voting on this item is as follows. I'll call for a move on the second of the entire motion with all amendments as submitted in advance by councillors listed, noting the name of the councillor for each amendment. Each councillor who has proposed an amendment will get two minutes to talk to that amendment. And then there'll be an opportunity if anyone wishes to speak in opposition. We will then vote on each item individually. Once all of the amendments have been resolved, we will then do a final vote on the entire motion. And at that point, people can also talk to the document as it lands. So can we have the motions put up on the screen, please? Okay.
So the key one to start with is just the overall?
Yep, yep. So do we have a mover of the motion, which basically includes a whole lot of topics to be discussed as potential amendments, but just the overall motion of approving the budget? Is anyone willing to move that? Councillor Arturi? Do we have a second? Councillor Sangster? Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move through. So the first amendment is the one by councillor Arturi in blue on the screen. Councillor Arturi, would you, you've got two minutes if you'd like to speak? No?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know why I'm in blue, but off we go. Thanks very much. So this project to upgrading lighting at Preston City Oval is essential to securing the future of elite football in Darabben. PCO has long been the home of the Northern Bullance Football Club. And this year, the Bullance have been joined by Darabben Falcons Women's Sports Club's VFL team. PCO now hosts two iconic VFL teams. And so the Oval plays a critical role in both women's and men's football development and pathways. And we now have a significant VFL hub in the heart of our city. This investment of $690,000 builds on the $700,000 commitment by the federal government and our local MP Jed Carney to upgrade the facilities at PCO to make them more gender inclusive. An upgrade to lighting complements the investment commitments that I just mentioned and will help to create a truly inclusive, welcoming, supportive and modern sporting environment that importantly assists the sustainability and success of the Falcons, the Bullance and community sports more broadly. The reason for bringing it forward is this significant project is to best position council to take advantage of additional funds that may be available from other stakeholders that will be needed to further improve PCO. Such funding would be more likely available if we signal council's intention earlier on to establish PCO as a significant VFL hub in Melbourne's North. VFL clubs like the Bullance and Falcons require high-level lighting to meet competition standards for evening training and matches. And without it, they face real challenges to operating, competing and growing at the elite level. With improved lighting, PCO becomes more viable space for community sports while strengthening Darabben's place as the home of elite level football. The upgrades are more than just sport. It's about fairness, community pride and ensuring both these iconic local clubs can thrive. And I hope to obtain the support of all councillors. Thank you, Mayor.
Does anyone want to speak against this motion? No? Okay, so we'll move to a vote. So those in favour, please raise your hand. That's passed unanimously. Thank you. So we're going to go to the next, councillor Dimitriades. We'll do them one by one, I presume? Yep, so one by one.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'm raising this, the first amendment, on behalf of councillor Bogliss, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. And I wanted to speak in support of a modest but meaningful amendment. And that's to allocate $45,000 in our upcoming 2526 budget to fund the feasibility study for the Melbourne Water Pipe Track shared use path. This isn't just about a path. It's about the long overdue need to build safe, continuous, accessible routes for walking, wheeling, cycling and moving through our city, particularly in reservoirs, where residents have repeatedly asked for better active transport infrastructure. Let's be honest, this isn't a flashy capital projects, project. It's a feasibility study. But it's the necessary step to unlock something far more impactful, a link that could connect Elizabeth Street to the Darabben Mary Creek Trail through neighbourhoods that don't currently have safe, direct routes. This would benefit children walking to school, families with prams, older residents, cyclists, people using mobility devices, everyday people trying to move around their community safely. And we know this isn't coming out of nowhere. This project is already Darabben's fifth highest priority in the Northern Region Trail Strategy, developed through regional planning and community input. The report simply gives us the facts we need, technical assessments, environmental consideration, safety issues and what it would actually cost to build. We've asked to fund the works that will show us and show our partners at Melbourne Water and State Government how and if this can be delivered. Most of the land is not owned by council. That's why it's essential we approach this in partnership and why this funding must be paired with advocacy. This amendment by councillor Bogliss includes a request that we formally write to the Victorian Government and Melbourne Water asking for a financial contribution and to begin the conversations that cannot start until we show we're serious. This is not just an exercise in planning, it's a step towards equality. Because if we're going to talk about active transport, about reducing emissions, about healthier communities, then we need to invest where the gaps are. And that includes the northern parts of Darabben. I commend this amendment and I ask for your support.
Thank you. I believe we've got an updated, I mean, which includes the letter that you referred to, so. All right. Does anyone wish to speak against this motion? Nope. So we vote then? All those in favour, raise your hand. So that's passed unanimously, thank you. So then councillor Dimitriades, we've got another one from you.
Excuse me, Mayor. Is it possible to ask a question about this before we proceed?
About?
About this next amendment?
Yes.
Is it?
Of councillors?
Yeah, of the officers. Beg your pardon, I should stand up. Through you, Mayor. Is the feasibility study around Victoria Road between Separation Street and Darabben Road required in order to assess how, like as part of developing the pedestrian crossing outside Nark, the signalised crossing outside Nark?
Thanks for your question councillor Jolly. And through you, Mayor. This current financial year has allocated 15,000. That's supporting three different concepts to be developed for the signalised crossing. And the next step is for the team to do some community consultation. So we expect to bring that decision to council later this year.
Sorry, perhaps I didn't express myself clearly through you, Mayor. So the feasibility study that's proposed here, is that connected to and is it required as part of? So feasibility study for Victoria Road, is that required as part of the works to get the signalised crossing?
Thanks for your question councillor. To clarify, no, what council has allocated this financial year is supporting the team to progress to the next stage to come to council with a proposed layout. This is related and complementary and looks at how people access the broader corridor to get to that point.
Yes, go ahead councillor O'Brien.
Thank you. Question on the
Question on the same piece. So separation to Darabben, yes. I'm just wanting some clarity in relation to the motion that brought this to us in the chamber previously. I thought we had an interpretation that that bit was still going ahead to feed into potential grant funding requests for future. So my understanding of it was the first part was removed via the vote on that menu, but the second part wasn't. Could I get clarification on that, please?
Is there anyone able to respond to that?
Yep.
Thank you Vanessa.
Thank you for your question councillor O'Brien. So in January, the relevant point relating to grants, sorry, just give me a moment, please, was investigate options to improve road safety along Victoria Road between South Crescent and Separation Street for cyclists and pedestrians but not a physically separated bike lane. So we can continue to progress grant opportunities, but I can share that many transport grant applications require, generally require that you have at least a concept stage. So we can, there might be opportunities to progress, but possibly some grant opportunities we couldn't, because we wouldn't, in this particular one, allow us to progress if we don't continue to do feasibility and design. We may not have full access to all the opportunities, but we can definitely still apply.
Sorry, just one more clarification. I think you just said South Crescent and Separation Street, Vanessa, did you mean Darabben and Separation Street, or is it the right way around? It's just, yeah, it's a little bit confusing to me, sorry.
Thank you councillor. So removes the following two projects: feasibility design Victoria Road, South Crescent to Separation Street. That relates to the January resolution, which was to ask that we progress via a grant investigating options to remove road safety along Victoria Road between South Crescent and Separation Street. So one, the first one, 337, would support us to do that. But we can, I can, we can still, without that funding, we can still consider applying for grant opportunities if they come up. But I can share that it generally helps us to be more competitive if we have done more, generally we need to have done feasibility and quite often grant opportunities require us to have a concept design as well.
Question?
Yes, through you, ma'am. Is it allowable to ask a question of councillor Demetriades about the rationale, or?
I think she'll talk to the motion in a moment, so.
Okay, I'd love to hear why this is being removed.
So no more questions? So councillor Demetriades, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. So my amendment today is in two parts. Firstly, the removal of two projects after there was significant community consultation that occurred about the Your Street, Your Say Group B projects about two years ago. And that was to align with council's resolution on the 28th of January 2025 this year to reprioritise projects that allow children to safely walk, cycle, take public transport or get dropped off at their school, kindergarten or childcare centre. So that was the priority projects that that resolution was ruled. So specifically, this resolution was to consider project 337 for grant opportunities as the GM also stated, and that was rather than putting it straight into the budget. And in particular, the removal of project 338, that was part of the January resolution, noting that council, and I quote, "was to continue its investigation for further treatments to provide safe crossings for pedestrians and cyclists near the entrance to the North Coast Aquatic and Recreation Centre", so that's point two above. Secondly, this amendment allocates $30,000 to fund the Preston Market feasibility studies, and I raised this amendment on behalf of councillor Gaetano Greco, may he rest in peace, who for years before even I was elected to council, led the fight to save the Preston Market from developers, and even on his last breath wrote to us to pursue the public acquisition of Preston Market because communities should never have to beg to keep their heritage and livelihoods intact. So I hope all councillors will support this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, did I go for a second? I know I didn't have to, it's all right. Does anyone want to speak against the motion? Councillor Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. It's quite baffling actually that we've just heard from officers that progressing with the feasibility design for both of these projects on Victoria Road actually improves our chances of getting a future grant opportunities forward, and also more importantly, that these projects are actually related and complementary to the project listed at item two of this particular amendment. So it seems here that if we pass all three points of this particular amendment, we would be cutting ourselves off at the knees, reducing our opportunities to bring more income in order to deliver the projects that actually the community supports. So both of those feasibility studies, those support had more than 50% community support through the Your Street, Your Say, and I note that this is about the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventieth time that we have debated these particular projects in this chamber. It is extremely disappointing to see that there is again a proposal to, on the one hand, so the previous amendment, we were speaking about the importance of enabling people to walk and wheel and cycle more safely in Darabben, and we have on the table here a proposal to actually not proceed with finding options to enable people to walk, wheel and cycle safely along Victoria Road, which is actually an important part of our transport network. So we have a lot of contradictions here, and this seems to be not beneficial to council in any way to not proceed with these feasibility studies. Perhaps it would be better if we were to defer that rather than completely can it all together, but I'm not in favour of point one here, but I do note that there is a significant need, significant need, and I have spoken about this in this chamber on several times previously, for, both in the gallery and in the chamber here, for a need for a safe crossing outside of Nark. I remind you councillors that there was somebody who was killed while riding their bike in that vicinity only a few years ago, and so please I urge you to really carefully consider the need to progress with all of these projects as part of a whole.
Okay, we'll move to the first. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, ma'am, I guess.
So I think councillor Sangster was first.
Oh, I was, are we not having further, you just moved, like?
I was hoping to keep moving through, but you've got an opportunity to speak at the end, but if you want, if you still need to.
Yeah, sure. So I would also like to speak against one, I'm in favour of two and three, so we might need to break this one down. South Crescent's known for its high traffic volume with cyclists reporting many near misses. The current design of South Crescent and this whole section lacks infrastructure to fully protect cyclists and pedestrians from car traffic, and it's dumbfounding that we would not want to fund a feasibility study that could lead to alternative future funding for Darabben.
Councillor O'Brien.
Thank you, ma'am. Mine is a little bit of what councillor Sangster has just said, but also a little bit procedural in that when councillor Demetriades rose to speak to this, I assumed we would be dealing with these three as individual items.
You can vote separately.
Yeah, great. So just to reiterate, we know that there are a number of safety issues the whole way through that corridor. We know the community has been consulted heavily on them. We know there are different views in the communities, as there are different views in this chamber, but I do think that removing something that gives us feasibility designs to be able to secure future funding doesn't stack up. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay, so let's move to the vote. So we'll go to point one first. So those in favour, please raise your hand. So that's councillor Aturi, councillor Demetriades, councillor Selkos and councillor O'Laurs. Those opposed, please raise your hands. Councillor Jolly, councillor O'Brien and councillor Sangster. So that is passed, carried. Number two, the council continues work towards the signalised pedestrian crossing. Those in favour, raise your hand. That one is carried unanimously. And number three, which is the Preston Market feasibility study, all those in favour, raise your hand, also carried unanimously. Thank you. So we will move on to, what's the next one? Sorry? Sorry, there should be one more, I believe. Coming? Okay, councillor Jolly, did you want to speak to this one?
Yes, ma'am, and if it helps, the governance team, yes, just to highlight which bits I'm actually referring, so we're just looking at the text in red there. It might be that the first, with the following amendment, might be a bit superfluous given we understand what it is we're amending here councillors, so assuming you're all under the standing, what I'm proposing here is that we allocate any of the unallocated capital works from project reference 401 in the budget papers to Your Street, Your Say projects to progress their delivery in 2025 to 2026. And I do this because, as many of us have noted so far, so councillor O'Brien commented in her speech about the Solar Saver Programme in the earlier item, that climate action is something that requires urgent action from us here at Darabben Council. And in order to align with the Climate Emergency Action Plan, I have proposed this amendment. I've just realised, we haven't got a second yet. So, no, we don't need one? Oh, thank goodness, sorry, I'm getting all confused. So in order to align with the urgent climate action that we need to take and to align with our Climate Emergency Action Plan, I have proposed this amendment to ensure that any unallocated funds left over in the Capital Works Budget support street safety projects, all street safety projects that we currently have approved and supported by the community and approved by council. We've heard from councillor Demetriades today of the need for safer streets to encourage people to walk and wheel and cycle. Our Climate Emergency Action Plan requires significant emissions reduction in our transport network, and in order to deliver on that plan, we need safe infrastructure to support people to walk and ride. And if we are going to ensure that we actually do deliver on our Climate Emergency Plan and on the community's needs that have been very openly expressed in the 2041 community vision, this needs to be part of the picture here. So out of overall budget, what we're talking about here is we have a Capital Works Budget of approximately $32 million, and this is looking at about $250,000 or so. It's not a lot, but what we can achieve with that money is significant change. It enables a lot of people to be able to walk, to choose to leave their car at home, and in a budget crisis, it's very expensive to use those forms of transport, encouraging people to walk to and from public transport options as well. So these are a very wide range of projects, and I believe that we just need to ensure that we've got the budget envelope within the Capital Works Budget to support the projects that the community have already told us that they want us to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jolly. Does anyone want to speak against this proposal? Councillor Aturi?
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I think parts of councillor Jolly's contribution made it seem like there's no money allocated to projects like this across the next four years, which is clearly not the case. This is basically saying that the unallocated capital works, which I think was 250 or 270 or whatever it was, I think it's 270, be sort of, you know, topped up onto projects of this nature. Whilst I'm not necessarily opposed to doing that, I don't really think that doing it at this meeting is the right time. We have an opportunity to use those unallocated funds for perhaps a number of projects that are important to the community, and of course, as we know, once we release this draft budget, we will have the opportunity to hear from members of the community and other stakeholders, and perhaps give us some really good ideas about how that 270-odd thousand should be spent. And it may well be the case that once we allocate some of that funding to various projects that are important to the community, that we are still able to use the balance of whatever's left over after that allocation to top up projects of this nature, which as I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to. So that would be my reason for opposing this particular amendment, and I think we should use the opportunity to hear from community wisely before we exhaust these unallocated funds in this way. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, ma'am. So just pick up on the allocation that we have currently in the budget for these types of projects. I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head, but it's not a huge amount, and there are still a lot of these projects on the slate from Group A, Group B that we haven't delivered to date. And we also have Group C, you know, currently in the wings ultimately until we get some progress on these ones. I understand what councillor Aturi is saying about consulting with the community, absolutely support doing that, but I think, yeah, what we've seen with other amendments so far is going to specific items for very specific amounts of money, so that is taking away from that opportunity for community in what we've done so far. I think passing this amendment still leaves the flexibility there basically, because what we're saying is, once we're all done and dusted and we allocate everything, then we maybe have some unallocated funds at that stage that we would align with Your Street, Your Say outcomes. So I don't think there's anything contradictory in that, I think it just means we have this as a holding point for the future and we acknowledge the importance of the work. That's the point, thank you.
Thank you. Just really looking for comments, if there's anyone else wants to speak against, so, none? Okay, so let's then take a vote. So those in favour, please raise your hand. I have councillor Jolly, councillor O'Brien and councillor Sangster. Those opposed, raise your hand. Councillor Aturi, councillor Demetriades, councillor Selkos and myself, councillor O'Laurs. Thank you. I think that's the last of those. So now we need, oh, my apologies councillor Selkos. We have one more, can we, councillor Selkos? Get up on the screen? Okay, thank you. Over to you.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'll keep a brief. Councillors, we know we're in a difficult financial situation. However, this amendment is to include a modest increase to the pensioner concession up to $250, which can go a long way in the current cost of living, and I hope all councillors can support it. I'll keep it nice and brief, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak against this motion? No? Okay, we might move to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That one's passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we need to, there are no more, are there? That's it? Okay. We need to do a final vote on the entire budget now, so does the mover, which was councillor Aturi, wish to speak? And you have three minutes if you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. I'm very pleased to rise and speak on the draft budget for 2025/26 and incorporating the other various documents listed in the item. The draft budget has been developed at a time of significant financial constraint, and we have to be realistic about what is possible for us to achieve for our community. But in those circumstances, I think we've done a pretty good job at striking that balance, and I want to commend officers for their extensive work and guidance, in particular over the last couple of months as we prepared to release the draft budget to the community. Just on that last item, I want to commend councillor Selkos for his proposed amendment, which was carried unanimously by all councillors regarding the increase in the council pensioner concession from 200 to 250. And it's something small that council can do to support our community when the cost of living is biting. Oh, I've only got one more minute. I don't have a lot of time, so you'll forgive me, Mayor, if I'm going to be a bit parochial in relation to my award for a moment and a few highlights. We've got the renewal of the playground at D R Atkinson Reserve, $200,000 for that, following a significant fire damage earlier this year. And I know how important this park is for the community, so I'm happy that we can action that. 2.4 million to the redevelop KP Hardingman Reserve in Kingsbury, 2.6 million to expand Maryborough Avenue in Kingsbury in partnership with the state Labor Government, 840,000 for renewal of changed facilities and equipment replacement at the Reservoir Leisure Centre, 320,000 invested into upgrading and renewing several aspects of Bundura Park and Bundura Park Golf Course, and 250,000 regarding, towards the design of a new pavilion at JC Donath East. And of course, we've got various footpath renewals. We know how important they are, Mayor, across Macleod, Bundura, Kingsbury and Reservoir. And I look forward to releasing this to the community and hearing their say at hearing of submissions and other avenues as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sangster, you were the second. Would you like to speak?
I reserve my right to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else like to speak to the budget? Councillor O'Brien? You both can. Councillor Jolly?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor O'Brien. I just wanted to say, extend my thanks to all of the staff who have worked tirelessly, tirelessly with all of us over the past several months to get us to this point. They have helped onboard all of us to understand some of the language, which, you know, I think I still need a bit of a dictionary about asset renewal and asset improvement. I just, if you could get a little cheat sheet that I could stick on a sticky motin, that'd be great. So sincere thanks to everybody who has contributed to this. My thanks to my fellow councillors for ensuring that we've gotten through what could have been a very complex and messy process today. And hopefully, the mayor's brain isn't completely fried, as it sometimes is when you're trying to chair a meeting like this with amendments and things. Thank you to the CEO for finding us a way forward, that enabled to get this, get through this efficiently. Thank you, everybody. And I do compel everybody who's watching today and anybody who's reading the minutes to please dive in, have a look through the budget, send us your feedback. Please come to the submissions hearing in a couple of weeks' time and provide us your thoughts on the future direction of Darabben and how we're going with our budget. And I think that was, there was something else that was on the tip of my tongue, but it's slipped my mind. So I commend the motion to you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Jolly's covered a fair bit of what I was going to say, so I won't go over it all. But yes, my ask, I guess, for the community, given we're about to release this draft, is please do look at it really seriously, really carefully. There's a lot of amazing work going on. We are in financially constrained times, but we're trying to do our best to spread this equitably across the municipality to meet the needs of all of the various people that need help in different ways, and our infrastructure that has needs in different ways. So please look at it, I think, from, I would urge from the holistic view, yes, our awards are important, but please look at it from the holistic view. We're delivering for Darabben. And hopefully, once you do that, you can see the spread that is being achieved across the whole community, and you can support some of those things. Please support the things that you want to support. If you see gaps, obviously, yes, we would like to see them. We want to know what other needs are out there that we may not have seen. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think everything's been said. So I won't add to that. But yeah, we will move on now to the council plan. Oh, we need to vote. Okay, we won't move on to the council plan just yet. So, all those in favour? Thank you. Passed unanimously. And now, we will move on to the council plan. So we will manage this in a similar way to the last item. So we will need someone to pass, to move the motion with various amendments sitting under it and a second. We will then work through, one at a time, each of the amendments. Those who have put those forward will get two minutes to speak to those. And if anyone wishes to speak against, we can also hear from you. And once they've all been resolved, we will have that final vote at which you can all have an opportunity to speak. So I presume we're all clear on the process this time round? Fabulous. Thank you. Okay, so if we can get the first, the motion up on the screen. Okay, so is there someone who is willing to move this motion? Councillor Jolly? Is there a second? Councillor Arturi? Oh, sorry. Okay, so we are going to go to the first amendment, which is councillor Dimitri Artis. Would you like to speak to this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the Preston Market is far more than just a place to buy fresh produce. The market embodies our rich migrant history with vendors from all over the world selling produce that reflect their heritage. It's a place where families from across Darabben and beyond have shopped for generations, forming relationship with stakeholders, stall holders. It's where stories are shared over coffee, where kids learn about fresh food, and where community spirit is on full display. It's also a vital source of livelihood for the stall holders of our community since it opened 55 years ago. The market is the beating heart of Preston, and this council knows that our community holds it in extremely high regard. Its social, cultural and historical value is irreplaceable. That's why we need to be acting proactively, engaging with community, traders and key stakeholders to make sure that Preston Market remains a thriving, inclusive space for generations to come, which is what this amendment seeks to highlight today. Thank you, Mayor. I hope all councillors can support it.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak against this motion? No? Okay, so we'll go to the vote. So all in favour, raise your hand. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. The second amendment is councillor O'Brien's. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So I'm pleased to move this amendment today, which proposes that Darabben recognise the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, or STGs, as a high-level framework that aligns with and supports our priorities in the 2025/29 council plan. The STGs were adopted by Australia in 2015 as part of a collective global commitment to building a fairer, more sustainable world. They're highly relevant to local government, and especially to us here in Darabben, as they reflect many of the things we're already doing and hold dear: addressing inequality, delivering sustainable infrastructure, strengthening community wellbeing and resilience, and acting on climate and emergency. By explicitly aligning our strategic directions with this global framework, we're acknowledging that local government plays a vital role in contributing to shared national and international goals, and that we do what we can locally to contribute to the global. This amendment does a few practical things. It highlights where our strategic direction already aligns with the STGs, bringing clarity and coherence to our long-term vision. It ensures our contribution is visible and meaningful, helping the community understand how local action connects to broader efforts. And it includes a Year One action under Strategic Direction Six to assess our alignment to the STGs, focusing on areas where council has the most impact and building the tools to track and report our progress from Years Two to Four. This is about enhancing the way we work. It can open the door to partnerships with like-minded organisations, strengthen our position for grant funding, and reinforces Darabben's role as a responsible, transparent and connected council. I offer this amendment as a positive, future-facing step, one that builds on our strengths and supports our community's wellbeing at a local level and in the global context. And I hope all councillors can see the value in it for our organisation and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. Would anyone like to speak against this motion? No? Okay. So all in favour, please raise your hand. That one's carried unanimously. Thank you. There's another one? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. So this one is quite short and sweet compared to where it started, so I thank people for their feedback and perseverance to help us land something that works in the context of the complicated process we're all going through right now. But basically, this is focusing on our new plan, as we plan to put it out to the community and hopefully finalise it in the next few weeks, and how it relates to our current Climate Emergency Plan. So we want to look to better reflect the clear commitments we've made through the Climate Emergency Plan. Our governance obligations are clear. We must act in the best interests of the current and future generations and prioritise environmental sustainability, including climate action. Darabben has led before. With our Solar Saver Programme that we spoke about earlier, others have copied and adapted this model: efficiency and extra electrification projects throughout their municipality, and our role empowering our facilities with renewable wind energy, and leading a partnership to help over 50 councils do the same. Our community expects us to build on this leadership. The Climate Emergency Plan was shaped by extensive community consultation and unanimously endorsed by council last year. It sets out an ambitious, achievable path. Our own updated community vision calls for effective climate response and a sustainable, green, livable city. This amendment aims to do the following to help us meet these commitments: reaffirm our commitment to the Climate Emergency Plan. We made some very clear commitments, so honouring Wurundjeri country and to the need to support our residents and businesses to take climate action. Two actions that are core to this that are not reflected in the current draft plan are Action 2.2.1, Support Programme for Electrification and Renewable Energy Uptake in 1,000 households per year; Action 3.6.1, Community Education on Energy, Food and Water Resilience, Reaching 5,000 Residents Per Year with a Focus on Vulnerable Groups. The amendment requests that we get more direct advice on how we can meet these commitments, and I commend it to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone... Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Excuse me? No? Okay. All in favour, please raise your hand. That one's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, councillor Sangster?
Yes, thank you. So the amendment is specifically the dark font in number six. I've included this amendment in order to highlight the importance of this work moving forward, recognising that Aboriginal culture and knowledge falls under pillar two of our Darabben Plan, and that supporting this work is one of our key strategic directions as a council. It seems clear that local council should get involved in the treaty journey in order to address historical injustices, promote reconciliation and improve community wellbeing. As local government, we are closer to the lived experience of all our communities, including our First Peoples, and so we can play a crucial role in supporting practical and asked-for initiatives within our jurisdictions. As we all know, the treaty journey, which so recently and excitingly has begun at state level, promotes First Nations sovereignty, self-determination and justice by recognising and honouring First Peoples enduring relationships with the land, the waters and the sky. We're so lucky here in Darabben to have so many extraordinary Aboriginal organisations. Treaty has the potential to empower community, to strengthen cultural ties to country, so I hope you will see the importance of including this in our council plan.
Can I just double check? That's the final version of what you... I know there was a few goes at it. Okay. That's all right. Yes, okay. Does anyone want to speak against this? Okay, so we'll go to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That one's carried unanimously as well. Thank you. We've got to come back then to the mover... We're going to have the final vote, but we'll come back to the mover, which is councillor Jolly, to say a few words. If you would like, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, councillors. That was a very swift process there, and really glad that all those amendments have been supported. So overall, this council plan, its pillars and its strategic objectives presents a way for how we can deliver on the 2041 community vision, which is what we adopted in February. That vision and also this plan reflects our community and their aspirations for Darabben now and into the future: caring for country, learning from and celebrating Wurundjeri Wurung wisdom, supporting each other. Those are all very strong themes in this council plan, as is climate action. Darabben has long been a leader in climate action, and in this council plan, we have the opportunity to take another critical step forward by aligning our local efforts with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, as councillor O'Brien introduced earlier. These goals are not just global aspirations, they are in fact a roadmap for action that communities like ours can use to secure a better future for our community. The draft council plan must reflect the ambition, the investment and the action needed to meet the targets that we have set out in the Climate Emergency Plan that was adopted in July last year. And so we, by releasing this plan in this state with these amendments, we're demonstrating that we're committed to embedding key actions from that Climate Emergency Plan into our planning for the next four years: from supporting electrification of 1,000 households a year to providing community education on resilience for thousands of residents. And by aligning our planning and budget with the Climate Emergency Plan, we're not just setting targets, we're ensuring that real action that makes a tangible difference in the lives of our residents. We need to ensure that the council budget and council plan both together, in order work together in order to meet the urgent demands of climate crisis and uphold our responsibility to future generations. Darabben has been a climate leader since 2016, and we continue to hold on to that mantle. We are demonstrating how local governments can respond to the climate emergency with real, meaningful action at the local government level. And as we align our work with the Sustainable Development Goals of the UN, we can be proud of our role in Darabben and the role that we are playing in creating a sustainable future for all. And this is not to say, well, it should not be, go without saying, I should say, how many times will I say, say, to say thank you again to all of the staff that have put in tireless work to bring this council plan together, including all the work that was put in for the community vision, the many workshops you've given up Saturdays, you've worn matching shirts, you've done all sorts of things for us to help us get into this process. Keep us on your toes by not wearing matching shirts today. That's an in-house joke. Apologies to the community for that. But sincere thanks to everybody who's sitting in this room and everybody who sits everywhere around council to help us to get to this point. I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? No? I might just say a few words, very similar to what everyone else has said, but really just in terms of this piece of work, I think it's, you know, we've put a lot of thought and effort into it as councillors and also with the great support of the staff here. We hope that it meets the needs of the community, but you have your opportunity to let us know about that, once this goes out for your comment. But yeah, we have tried very hard to listen to what we've been told from the community, to balance the sort of very basic council services that people would like to see being done better, but also with, you know, the very important issues around health and wellbeing and other kind of bigger picture issues too. So I think, we hope we've got it right. We want to hear back from you. And yeah, we're really very committed to making this work in what is a very constrained financial period. So not everything we want to do is on there at the moment. We're going to hear from you. We'll have another little rejig of the budget in June, after we've heard from you, I think on the 16th of June. after we've heard from you, I think, on the 16th of June. We have a hearing, the information is on the website, where you can come and tell us what you think. So thank you. We will go to a vote now, which I'm just presuming is going to go ahead, but we will. We'd better do the vote. So all of those in favour, please raise your hand. And that's carried unanimously. So thank you all. I think that's it. Where do I go? I think we're right at the end, aren't we? Yes? That's it. I think that's it. Thank you, everybody who's here in attendance. Thanks to all viewing online, as there is no other business to consider...